Thank you, our next speaker, please. Speaker forty-one, Wongbo Wing.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm sorry, are my parents coming, John and me? My parents? We're parents from Winnie Young High School. We are advocating for a uniform mandatory grading policy, a ten-point grading scale for all high schools in CPS. Because of the following three reasons. First, it will level the playing field when it comes to grades and the students' GPAs across CPS will be comparable. Second reason, two students may receive the same scores. However, their GPAs can be different depending on the grading scale the school adopts. In the handout we passed out earlier, there's a table. The table shows a good example that two students have exactly same scores in five courses, but their GPAs are 2.4 and a 3.4. The difference is 1.0, which is about 25 percent difference. We believe that it's unfair to compare college enrollment rate across CPS high schools when different grading scales are implemented. Our third reason, student in those schools such as Winnie Young who's adopted a more rigorous grading skills than a ten-point scale are at a disadvantage in competing for college admissions, receiving scholarships, admissions to honor programs in college, and applying for NCA scholarships. So in conclusion, we're requesting CPS to adopt a ten-point grading scale across all CPS high schools. I want to thank you to all board members for opening your hearts and minds to hear our deep concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Michael Su.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Michael Zhou. I'm a parent of CPS students. We're here to support a uniform grading system across CPS. We gave away two handouts earlier, but since we have no time to explain in details, I would like to summarize the two handouts in one sentence. That is, in terms of academic, I'm sorry, I can't see it. In terms of, I tried to look at the same time. Okay. In terms of academic performance, CPS is not doing well compared with other school districts in the state of Illinois. And Illinois in turn itself is not doing well compared with other schools in the US. That basically shows how much behind CPS is in the nation. We're not here to point fingers, it's that we are trying to find out the reasons so that we can improve together. When students are not doing well, we believe there are two main reasons. One is the teachers. Two is the students themselves. Since the compensation of CPS teachers is among the highest in the nation, we believe our teachers are motivated enough to work hard and do a good job. Then it comes down to the second reason, which is the students themselves. In our eyes, there are no stupid people. They're only lazy people. Our students are not doing well because they're not motivated enough to study hard. They are not motivated because many of them are still discouraged by the tougher-than-average grading system still employed by many schools in CPS, which requires a minimum of ninety-three for an A. According to a study published by Yale University two years ago-
Mr. Su, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Okay.
Thank you.
Students tend to be discouraged and even give up when receiving a low grade. Therefore, in order to encourage our students to get back on track, we would like to ask the CPS to take a look at this urgent issue and then employ a uniform grading system with a scale of ten points, meaning a score of ninety percent is an A. Thank you, board members, for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, our next speaker will be Speaker forty-eight, Tracy Stancio, followed by Speaker forty-four, Jackson Potter, then Speaker fifty-two, Juanita Ariola, Speaker fifty-three, Adela Tobias, and then fifty-four, Antoinette C. Gerald, please.
Good afternoon. Actually, I have four issues, but I'm going to highlight my top two. The first one is there is a loophole in your selective enrollment policy that gives an advantage to private school students, that I think it's very important that we close that loophole. Private school students are allowed to take their standardized tests multiple times, and they choose which one is submitted to the school. I think it's unfair because my children have to take the ISAT, and you just take that score. We're not allowed to go off and take the Terranova or another test and submit that score. As you probably know, thirty percent of Walter Payton's freshmen came from private schools, and I know for a fact that this is happening. One of my neighbors actually did it. His child took her standardized test over again so she could get a higher score, and that was the score that was submitted. The second thing, I live in the Gap Community organization, in the Gap Community, which is bounded by Thirty-first to Thirty-fifth, from King Drive to Michigan. We currently have ten high schools within six blocks of my house. I gave everybody a handout. There's a map on there with all ten schools. We have approximately six thousand students coming into our community every day, and while we love and value education, because many of us are CPS parents, as myself, I'm a current CPS parent of a student at Alcott Elementary and a student at Whitney Young, we ask that CPS put a moratorium on adding any more high schools in our community, because I'm sure there are other communities that could use a high school. Another thing about grading scale. Alcott Elementary School changed from a seven-point scale to a ten-point scale, and in my opinion, the standards got lowered. And what happened was, according to the teachers, the grades dropped and the student effort dropped. So because the bar was lowered, so did the students lower their efforts. So that's my take on that. And I want to talk about the tier system.
Ms. Stancio, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
I live in a tier four, and granted, that is a correct assessment of my community, but President Obama has a multimillion-dollar house, and his house is located in a tier three. Now, I think this system is unfair, because there are people in my neighborhood who live in apartments, who live in subsidized housing. Those students should not be categorized as a tier four, and I think it's unfair, and I think that CPS needs to really look at this tier system and how it's being used.
Thank you, Ms. Stancio.
And I don't have a problem volunteering my time to help out with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Last call for Jackson Potter. Last call for Juanita Ariola. Last call for Adela Tobias. And last call for Antoinette C. Gerald. Moving on to the last three speakers on the list. Speaker fifty-five, Katina Jones. Speakers fifty-seven, Michael Federico. And Speaker fifty-nine, Natasha Dunn. Katina Jones. Last call for Michael Federico. Natasha Dunn. Mr. President, this concludes public participation.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. At this time, I'd like to ask my fellow board members if they have any questions or comments or reactions to public participation comments. Jesse, I'll start with Jesse.
Couple of things. Interesting that we had a couple of folks today talking about overcrowding at schools, and I noticed the folks at Canty, they're actually more overcrowded than the folks at Lincoln, and there's the dilemma that there's a lot of need and some different situations, and so there's very difficult economizing decisions that have to be made, and we've got to weigh a lot of factors. But that was interesting to know, that Canty's actually more overcrowded than Lincoln. Regarding the student data, I don't know if Wendy's still here, or actually, it wasn't Wendy, but the speaker who mentioned the student data and privacy, there is actually, and I noticed in the materials, it doesn't reference FERPA. There's a federal law that protects student data, and I'm sure my former colleagues at the State Board of Education are very cognizant and very compliant with the FERPA laws, FERPA law, and are doing all they can to protect student data. And then Wendy, she mentioned DLEPE being a CPS mandate. It's actually a state mandate, so it's not our, it's not our law, it's the state's law, and we need to comply. Fingerprinting, I can tell you for a fact, my firm is participating in WITS program, and we had fingerprinting done onsite at our law firm for all of volunteers who are mentoring the students at DeDiego every Wednesday afternoon at our law firm. And then lastly, meetings with parents, she mentioned the evenings, many of us, and something that we used to do at the State Board of Education is go around and mention, not to bore everybody with these things, but we'd go around and mention all the things we would do around the state, and many of us get out and meet with parents all the time. Carlos and I were just with, what, a hundred, two-hundred parents on Friday morning out at the Velazquez Institute, and so we probably need to do a better job of letting you all know that we're out there listening to folks, talking to folks, and that sometimes, whether we like it or not, talking to parents who approached us in the elevator this morning happened to me, and so we'll have to make sure that folks know about that, we're actually actively doing that, and maybe in a more formal and systemic way in the future, as a board can do that as well.
All right, thank you, Jesse. Henry.
I'm curious if CEO Bird Bennett has some comments on a couple of points that I thought were interesting, or maybe some of her colleagues. One, the last, one of the last speakers took up the question of tiers. I don't think there's any perfect way of trying to work out an algorithm for entrance into selective schools, but I did take the point about tiers, that you have inside districts and neighborhoods differentiation of income and ability to avail yourself of various extra-school things. So my first question is to her, what did you make of the tier question, if anything?
I'm going to be, I jotted a note for staff. I was a little confused by tiers. I wasn't quite sure whether it was in reference to the tiers that are being established around the interventions that we're providing, whether it was tiers in terms of definite, my staff is going, no, okay, was it was definition in terms of the work that you're doing, John, and so if you have two seconds to address, that would be good.
Chairman Vitale, members of the board, Dr. Bird Bennett. To Dr. Bennett's point, we're in a relatively unfortunate situation where the word "tier" is used a lot in educational terms. Tearing has been associated, you heard Mrs. Skirley talk a little earlier today about multi-tiered system of support. There's the piece that that replaces, that's a response to intervention. At the core of the intervention, of response to intervention, is a three-tiered system, tiers three, two, and one. So there's a level that's talked about there as far as tiering. As our presentation gave you as far as the school quality rating policy, there's five tiers there, but the tier that was mentioned by the speaker here today specifically addresses the selective enrollment tiering. And across the city, based on a response, and Council Beble could speak to this a little bit more fully than I, but relative to a economic distribution across the city to provide equal access to selective enrollment, residents and, I guess, residences and addresses are assigned a tiering, a tier across the city, and then tiers of applicants have opportunities to apply to selective enrollment schools and be drawn from those four categories.
As we take a look at the selection enrollment process relative to examine, the examinations and the depth of the examinations, and we're reviewing that process in total along with grading, this is probably something, board member, that we would reexamine and get back to the board with.
I mean, I think it's, it's the last point, she was referring to selective admission, obviously, and it raises a question that they're designed to equalize ability to get into selective schools based on advantages and disadvantages, which are, which are rather over-homogenized, was her point, because inside these neighborhoods, you get differentiation. I don't know what, how one deals with it, but it's, it's not a trivial point, I think, since the whole thing is aimed at equity, but I won't belabor it here, but I think it ought to be looked at. The other, the other question that I thought was raised earlier was referencing an article in the Tribune on the number of students who went from closed schools to welcoming schools. That article, if I can recall it, by the way, picked out thirty schools out of the forty-nine closed schools, and it then said, if I, not sure I'm going to be able to remember the exact number, but something like sixty percent, rather than eighty-odd percent that we had expected, actually moved from closed schools to welcoming schools. So the question that I have, because the article said it came from CPS data, what is, one, is that true? Was it, was it accurate? The article accurate? Again, I was a little struck that it didn't do all four, if you're going to do that and write that kind of article, you ought to look at all forty-nine schools, not just thirty of them, but maybe the access wasn't available at that time. I don't know if anybody else remembers that.
So, Henry, if I could just add to your question, I will let the management respond, but, but the point that was also made was the distribution of resources, and, and you can, as you respond to this other question, respond to this, is I understood and recollect the formulation for providing resources to schools that received children from closed schools, if schools actually received more than X, and I don't remember the exact number, regardless of whether they were defined as a welcoming school, those schools also got additional resources, and maybe you could confirm that. So just the fact that you weren't a welcoming school, that didn't mean you were the only school that got additional resources. You know, whatever the percentages were, some of these children ended up going to schools that were not welcoming schools, and the formulations that we approved actually approved additional funding for those schools that got a number of additional students, even if they were not welcoming schools. I think, could you confirm that as well?
That's, that's absolutely correct, President Vitale. Those schools that we called, they were de facto, and then there were schools that children and their families made choices to attend in greater numbers than we had anticipated. Given we're a district of choice, that was obviously permitted, but we read, we did redirect resources to those schools, and I, the number I thought was twenty-five or more, Tom?
Thirty.
Thirty. If thirty or more children went to a school that we had not identified originally as a receiving school during the consolidation process, then we did direct, redirect resources to those schools. With respect to the Tribune story, it is, we have ninety-three percent of all of the children that were impacted, eleven thousand seven hundred twenty-nine, that were impacted under consolidations, ninety-three percent of those children are in a school in our district, including those that were not designated as welcoming schools, hence the resources following those children. Seventy percent of those children attended the school that we identified as their welcoming school, and sixty percent attended a non-welcoming school. The three, the seven percent difference, we are researching right now. We believe that some of those children either relocated, could be in a charter school, and we are digging into that data now. What is misleading in the article is that all of the schools, to your point, were not considered, and so the numbers were misleading. And John, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Dr. Bird Bennett, the only question, or the only piece that I would add to that, only annotation, and to Dr. Bennett's question, in fact, we provided all information about all eleven thousand seven hundred twenty-nine students to the Tribune, it's just that they chose to particularly focus on those thirty schools.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things.
Andrea.
Can we just get a clear definitive understanding of what the volunteer policy is? Because every time somebody says it, it's something new. So if you're going to volunteer in the schools, what's required? Can somebody tell me?
The policy varies, and I think what is happening is people are confusing when you have volunteer and when you don't.
Sorry, when you what?
I'm sorry, when, what constitutes volunteering, under what circumstances? And Alicia can talk a little bit more about the fingerprint policy, but there is a safe harbor if people are volunteering under a certain number of hours per week where they do not have to go through that process. I don't want to-
Okay, well, A, I'd like to understand what the policy is, and B, we need to better explain it to, if we have schools sending parents downtown when they don't really need to, that's obviously not, that, we need to better explain it, but I don't understand it, so if you could, somebody could tell me what it is, that would be great.
Good afternoon, board. My name's Alicia Winkler, and the Chief Talent Officer. I'm going to address one aspect of Board Member Zop's question, which is related to our safety and security procedures, and what changed and is causing question and some confusion right now, which you're absolutely right, Board Member Zop, to ask us to ensure that we do a better job communicating so that we, we reduce this confusion and miscommunication, is that we, we aim to increase our safety and security procedures on behalf of our students, and that included ensuring that our volunteers, who are regular volunteers in our schools and interact with students on a weekly basis, many of whom are parents or others, do, do participate in a fingerprinting screening process, and not just what was historically used, which was a name check process. Under a name check process, it allowed for folks who have common names, as well as folks who might have multiple aliases, to potentially get through our former safety and security measures, and we wanted to ensure that that loophole was closed. And so on behalf of students, we now require all who interact with students on a frequent and regular basis to participate in a fingerprint background check. For volunteers, so for not-
Wait, and a fingerprint, excuse me, fingerprint background check that's executed and done where and how?
Yep. So we have, there are facilities all throughout the city. It's done by our vendor firm called Accurate Biometrics. One of the locations that they participate, that they have is at our Staffing Services Center, at the Elizabeth Center, which was referenced by the speaker. There are multiple facilities, though, and locations that our vendor has in which folks can go get their fingerprinting, and if there is a volume of folks who are requiring a fingerprinting at a specific location, Board Member Ruiz referenced, coming to his law firm, we have also brought the services to the individuals. For that, we look at scale, and we, we then can have, ask the vendor to move to different facilities and participate with us in making that happen. So that's an option that we have, that we can employ.
And how do the parents know to exercise that option?
So we're following up in terms of communication with all of the principals right now to ensure that they're talking to parents about the options that are available to them. What we understand anecdotally is happening is that principals, because they're assuming that the only, the process that's employed is the employee process, so they're sending folks to staffing services rather than providing a full menu of where folks can get their fingerprinting.
Board Members Zop, we'll provide clarity to the, to the field, to the principals. I think that the isolated incident that was brought here is, is really isolated, but we will send out to principals directly clarification on that policy so that parents aren't penalized.
The only reason I don't think it's isolated is it's not the first time I've heard it. So I don't know that it's isolated, and the other thing I would encourage you to do is to put it in writing somewhere, either online or, and, and, or on paper that the principals can just give to people, so that you don't have this problem. And that's why I raised the question, had I not heard it before, I wouldn't have asked, but this is not, it's-
The website has been updated for the volunteer site, so we'll follow up on that, and appreciate the, the call-out and the suggestions and recommendations.
Thank you. And Alicia, if you would draft something that we could get out directly to principals in their hand with possibly the recommended letter that the-
It just, it sounds bad, that's all right. We're encouraging parents to come to school, and they go, oh, they gotta come to the school, you gotta go get fingerprinted, you know, somewhere, and it would just be nice to have an easy answer, all right? That's all.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Carlos?
Yes, I just had a couple of quick comments. At the beginning, we had some speakers address the issue of dual language, and I think it's, this is very important, and we need to start paying attention. Some of our schools do well, and it's an asset-driven initiative, and many times in the terminology, English language learners, we use a deficit-driven approach to identify students. I'm sure Barbara is paying attention to that. And finally, with the implementation of the promotion policy, hopefully, this will lead to less retention and more differentiated approach with support, which is what the policy is intended to do, and provide that type of clarity, implementation, and results. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask one question about the high school grading policy. Is this something, Barbara, we're going to be looking into?
As a matter of fact, we had this discussion in Cabinet recently, and there is a wide variation, and we need to come up, involve some stakeholders in it, but come up with what is the CPS grading policy?
I have, I have both a comment and a question, if I might. The question, there was some fairly serious accusations in the, in the two, I think, parents, maybe one was a grandparent, I'm not sure, about the Earl situation. I thought they were kind of serious. Are you familiar with it, or is somebody familiar with it that can tell us something about that?
Yes, thank you, President Vitale. We were aware, and we've had members of the team who have actually gone to Earl to meet with the principal, to meet with those parents, et cetera. I did make a note to myself, however, that it, it obviously requires additional follow-up, so I'll be meeting with Denise and Phil and others to address these issues. I will have a conversation with the principal, visit the school, and then re-confer with team members and get back to those parents.
Okay, thank you.
Barbara, can you include in that, that whole thing about the library with these pictures? I mean, I don't know where the pictures are from, or if that's the current condition of the building, but if it is, obviously, that's something we'd like to-
Absolutely.
Right, address.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
And then on a comment, because I think there's, we had a number of parents here with respect to the application process for charter schools. I, I hope everybody understands by law, we have to provide a process for people to apply to open charter schools. That's state law, that's not our rule. We have to follow that law, so when applications come in for schools, you know, we cannot reject applications forthwith or say, do not apply. People have the right to apply under state law, and then the systems process takes over as to whether the application can be ultimately approved and accepted and brought before this board. So I just, people need to understand, understand that. And then I guess finally, I know work is being done on the warning list in the charter school arena, and, and there's been an attempt to communicate with schools about that, but to my understanding, that is, at this point, yet not final, but is likely to be finalized soon. It is not an action to be taken by the board for what that's worth. Okay, with that, Madam Secretary, I think we can proceed with the voting.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will begin with items on the public agenda and only read the board report numbers since the titles and board reports appeared on the public agenda, and I will begin with RS one, two, and three, and, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Do I have motion? So moved.
Second. I'll proceed with a roll call. Dr. Benin?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board Members Zop?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six i's, zero nays. I will continue with a communication. This item does not require a vote. This is to advise that the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, November twentieth, twenty thirteen, will be held at the Central Administration Building, one twenty-five South Clark Street, Board Chamber, fifth floor. The board meeting will begin at ten thirty a.m. Public participation guidelines are available on cpsboe.org or by calling seven seven three five five three sixteen hundred. For the November twentieth, twenty thirteen board meeting due to the Veterans Day holiday on Monday, November eleventh, advanced registration will be available beginning Tuesday, November twelfth at eight a.m. and be extended to Monday, November eighteenth at five p.m. or until the sixty slots, sixty speaking slots are filled. You can advance register during the registration period by the following methods, online, by phone, or in person, and the public participation segment of the meeting will begin as indicated in the meeting agenda, and proceed for no more than the sixty registered speakers. I will proceed with additional items on the public agenda, Mr. President, that do require a vote, and they are EX one, ED one, AR one, and, Mr. President, these items just do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favor of the roll call.
Thank you. Proceeding with the agenda items, they are PR one, two, and three. Moving on to PR four, PR five. On PR six, Mr. President, for the record, I would like to note abstentions for Vice President Reese as well as Dr. Benin on PR six. Moving on to PR seven and PR eight, for the record- Moving on to PR7 and PR8, for the record, I would like to note abstentions for Vice President Reese on PR7 and on PR8. I will continue with PR9, 10. Moving on to PR11, for the record, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR11. And then on PR12, for the record, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese as well as Dr. Bennett on PR12. On PR13, for the record, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR13. Moving on to PR14, on PR15, for the record, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President, Vice President Reese on PR15. And then we have PR16. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Then we'll continue with additional items on the agenda that do not require a vote, and they are MS1, EX2, EX3, and AR2. Mr. President, these items just need to be accepted by the board.
Please mark, receive, and file.
Thank you, Mr. President. And there are no further items on the public agenda. We will now proceed with the closed session motion from Dr. Hines, please.
I move for the passage of motion number 13-1023-M01, and the commencement of a closed session to consider the subject specified in the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Proceed with the roll call. Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board Members Zop?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays.
Okay, we adjourn to closed session. Meeting of the Board of Education is reconvened. Madam Secretary, please proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will start with items from closed session. And I will begin with settlements. These items do require a vote. First report, workers' compensation, payment of lump sum settlement for Gerald Arena, case number 04WC1357. The second report, workers' compensation, payment for lump sum settlement for Christina Kloutch, case number 09WC25591, 08WC5075, 08WC27515, and 11WC28319. The third report is the workers' compensation, payment of lump sum settlement for Marsha Levine, case number 12WC6061. The fourth report is the workers' compensation, payment of lump sum settlement for Barbara Marino, case number 08WC28120. The fifth report is the workers' compensation, payment of lump sum settlement for LaShawn Yancy, case number 11WC10520. The sixth report, approved settlement with Business Supply Systems Inc., case number Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Is there a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
I will proceed with a roll call. Dr. Bennett? Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board Members Zop?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. I will continue with items from the Chief Executive Officer, and I will begin with personnel appointments. These items do require a vote, Mr. President, and they are, first report, transfer and appoint chief operating officer, Office of the Chief Executive Officer, Tom Terrell. Second report, transfer and appoint chief of schools, Office of Network Support, Rhonda Core Segert. Third report, principal contracts, new ALSC. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you. I will continue with other matters, and these items do require a vote, Mr. President, and they are, first report, adopt finding that pupils are non-residents of the City of Chicago indebted to the Chicago Public Schools for non-resident tuition. Second report, adopt finding that pupil is a non-resident of the City of Chicago indebted to the Chicago Public Schools for non-resident tuition. The third report is adopt finding that pupils are non-residents of the City of Chicago indebted to the Chicago Public Schools for non-resident tuition. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you. And I will continue with items from the board. These items do require a vote, Mr. President, and they are, first report, resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the dismissal of Sunday, Yuma Rogi, principal formerly assigned to Eugene Field School. And for the record, I would like to note that this resolution accepts the hearing officer's recommendation. The second report is the resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss educational support personnel. The third report is the resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss a probationary-appointed teacher. And, Mr. President, for the record, I would like to note that on October 9th, 2013, the board members and the office of the CEO, and the board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss a probationary-appointed teacher pursuant to Board Rule 4-7B2B and 105ILCS5/34-84. Her recommendation included the name of the teacher affected and the reason. She also noted that the teacher affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. And the fourth report is the resolution authorizing the honorable termination of the regularly certified and appointed teachers. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I believe Vice President Reese has a motion, please.
I do. I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of September 25th, 2013 pursuant to Section 2.06 of the Open Meetings Act. Board members reviewed these minutes and determined that the need for confidentiality continues to exist. Therefore, the minutes of the closed session meeting held on September 25th, 2013 shall be maintained as confidential and not available for public inspection at this time.
May I have a second? Second.
Thank you. I'll proceed with the roll call. Dr. Bennett?
Aye.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board Members Zop?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. And I believe Board Members Zop has a motion, please.
I move that the record of proceedings of the regular board meeting of September 25th, 2013, prepared by the board secretary be approved, and such record of proceedings be posted on the Chicago Board of Education website in accordance with Section 2.06B of the Open Meetings Act.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll proceed with the roll call. Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board Members Zop?
Yes.
Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. And, Mr. President, there are no further items on the executive session agenda?
A motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Meetings adjourned.